Needs for our services. As the chief was speaking, I had the thought that I suppose most everything we do can be translated to that in some manner, shape or form. So with that, we'll talk about our growing needs related to fire services. So a little bit of background on this. How that impacts where future fire stations, uh, will be needed. So, uh, with that, I'd like to talk about the. So, as part of this review. Data was collected from the last five fiscal years of call response. Uh, the, the sources for that were primarily the fire record management system. The, the fire record management system, the name of it is Image Trend. Now that is provided by the Department of Insurance and it is available to all fire departments in the state of North Carolina. Uh, for record management. And the other primary source of data is the, uh, the CAD, the. Computer assisted, uh, dispatch. That data revealed that in that five fiscal year periods, there were approximately twenty three hundred incidents. Uh, there has been a significant increase in demand in recent fiscal years, including fifty six percent. Demand increase in each of the past two full fiscal years, twenty two and twenty three. With that demand, not surprisingly, eight to ten times more demand. For, uh, Station One, which is the, uh, downtown fire station as opposed to the two other, uh, stations. Uh, of that demand, uh, sixty three percent of all responses. Were related to, uh, rescue and medical emergencies. So how do, how do we approach what methodology, uh, is used to, to take all this data? Crunch the numbers and, uh, produce, uh, results that we can use. We can translate to on-the-ground actions. So the goal, you, you start with the goal. So the goal is. To determine what level of service the fire department can provide ninety percent of the time when someone calls nine one one. Another important part of that standard is the response time. The goal for response time being four minutes associated with that ninety percent. Coverage. Other tools that were used for the, uh, analysis, a GIS PowerPoint. Program using the ISO rating systems, uh, NFPA seventeen ten. And something called a vulnerability risk index, which I will discuss in a little bit more detail as we go through, uh, the data. Uh, so. What did we conclude? What are the consultant's recommendations? So, four primary recommendations is to place priority timing on the areas with expanded development that is. Occurring rapidly. Securing land through whatever means are available for development of future stations. Uh, planning for capital improvement funding, because obviously that will be, uh, very important for. Uh, accomplishing the plan and conducting a periodic review, right? Number reasons for conducting a periodic review. Population growth, uh, pace of development being a couple of those. And also the need to, as stations are added over time. This needs to be analyzed, you know, to, to recalculate the response times and travel distance and, and so forth. So, we'll get into some of the background of, uh, the response factors. So, there are myriad of. Factors that come into play that you think about. You may think about road mileage, distance traveled. Those are all important. According to NC Fire Chief Consulting, the industry standard, the three greatest response factors are population. Land use and demand for services. So I'll, I'll talk about those, uh, individually. Uh, first for population. We look at our. We looked at our population density, both current and future. To begin to get an idea of, of where growth is happening, where population is increasing and to evaluate. Travel distance, travel time to those areas. Uh, this, uh, comparison images. Uh, show, you know, the clear trend that we are seeing based on the. Proposed and approved developments, uh, in our fire district. With the, as I said, the yellow indicating the areas with approved development that will be adding population. Um, at a rapid pace. Next factor. Is land use risk. So. With relation to land use risk with the fire service analysis. It's a little bit different than with our land use plan. However, it is closely tied to types of development. With low-density, single-family development being the lowest risk. And industrial types of development. Being highest risk. Um, this, this analysis of the current and proposed development patterns. Shows how our land use risk will change, uh, going into the future. Um, as you can see from the, the color palette there, um. The highest. Risk areas are kind of remaining unchanged largely. Uh, but there are a lot of new high-risk, um, areas, uh, being development, being developed as, uh, the approved plans are being built. Uh, the last, uh, most important response factor is demand for services. Uh, this comparison shows somewhat of a heat map of. Current demand for services on the, the left portion of the screen and. As we add in the proposed, uh, development areas on the, the right portion of the screen. You can, can see not surprisingly that, uh, the demand for services is, is growing. Uh, disproportionately in the eastern, um, area of the fire district. So what does, what does all that mean and how did the consultant? Translate this into recommending station locations. And that is done through something called a vulnerability risk index score. Uh, this image on the right of your screen, uh, when increasing. Intensity is derived from taking those three factors of. Population, land use and demand for services and creating a matrix of those risk factors. And overlaying that in a GIS database onto the, the fire district. The minimum VRI score being. Between two and three and the maximum or most risk score being between fourteen and fifteen. So again, this, this correlates the trends that we saw in, in the other, uh, response elements. Showing that risk significantly increasing in the eastern portion of the fire district. However, the, the western portion. Is not without, you know, some more modest increases in, in VRI, but. Uh, majority of increases are in the eastern part of the fire district.
Excuse me, Ken. What's the approximate size on those hexes? Is that, it looks like it's about a. What, about a square mile?
The size, you're talking about the size of the, like the hex guns?
I'm sorry.
I did, yeah, I don't recall off, but a quarter to half mile, maybe?
A quarter to half, yeah, that, thank you. That's, that makes more sense.
So, so with that information in hand, the consultant, uh, prepared exhibits for optimal. Future station location areas for the overall fire district. Uh, which is the image that you see on the right portion of the screen. So. The, the three, the first thing that is notated here are the three existing stations, starting at the bottom of the. Screen with Station Three and Station One near the center and then Station Two up off O'Graham Road. The symbols on the western portion of the fire district. Are recommended future station location areas for the western part of the fire district. Based on, as I said, based on that analysis of the, uh, population, land use. And demand for services. And then the, the last thing represented on, on this image, on the eastern. Portion of the fire district, uh, the, the dark colored, uh, locations. And those are the four locations that. Are in the closest proximity with the Chatham Park PDD. Um, it, it, it's important to note that the development data that staff provided to the consultant. Included, of course, Chatham Park. It also included. Northwood, Mosaic. It also included the more recent, uh, development approvals. That have been through the zoning process, including Reeves Farm, including, uh, Madison Ridge, Turkey Creek. Uh, so it was, uh, comprehensive in nature of the development data that was provided. So, uh, the last, uh, image that we will talk about are the four, uh, station areas that are within or in. Very close proximity with the Chatham Park, uh, planned development districts. As, as you are aware, um. Part of the master planning for the PDD included. A commitment to work with the town on station locations, um, including. Providing. Sufficient, you know, land area for station locations. Uh, we have had sessions of this information, uh, with Chatham Park. And, you know, one of our next steps will be. A discussion about more specific locations, you know, as you'll, as we see from this, this is an area. You know, the hex cons. Represent the station location area. So, uh, we will be moving forward. Very soon with discussing specific locations primarily in the, uh, the. South Village Small Area Plan that will, uh, soon be submitted to staff will review. We'll be discussing. How to identify those specific locations, um. So that we have the, the adequate. Land area for the stations. Uh, the last, one of the last things on this one slide, I'll just mention, um. Those numerical one, two, three and four, they're not exactly in the order that a station should be built. Correct. That's, that's, that's a good, that's a good observation from the bottom up. Had overlooked, so. It's just really, it's one of the, one of the features of.
Foresting number one.
Analysis is it doesn't know. What stage of development the projects are approved. It is judging based on response time, travel distance, those kind of generic factors. So. That's, that's a great point, Commissioner Farrell. Uh. As I said, we will be planning for those station locations, uh, along the, the south and east. However, the first station need may end up being. In the, in the northeast, so. So, um, one of the, the last things or the last thing we asked the consultant was to give us some information on. Typical, you know, fire station cost. They provided this, uh, rendering of a. Station that was recently constructed in a neighboring, uh, jurisdiction. You know, as with all construction, the, the cost estimates were. Seatingly high. Uh, they estimated between five hundred and fifty and six hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Which, uh. It was quite jaw dropping for us. However, it does give us a indication of, of the capital list that we will have for. For these stations in the future, so. So Mayor, with that, that concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Is a ten-square-foot fire station going to be useful?
Yep. Maybe.
Any questions from the?
Yes, I have, I have a question. Uh, during the, uh, the board meet, the, excuse me, the budget meeting. Uh, on Friday, we talked about the response time, uh, for the fire department. And, uh, I was surprised to hear it was, uh, eleven minutes. Is that correct? I know that we talked today about future fire departments built for Chatham Park, but. The fire department's response time doesn't hinge on your building. It's, it's the real time right now. Do we have plans for addressing that?
I'm asking. I, I think the, the strategies that were discussed in the study are. Part operational and then part are just physical, you know, building of stations and.
We have four stations planned. They're all in Chatham Park. We have eleven-minute response time right now. So there is, that has nothing to do with Chatham Park, really. Do we, do we, are we going to talk about that or is that a, a different topic?
Uh, we, we certainly admit probably isn't an item best addressed by the fire chief. It's a little bit out of my range of comfort, I, I understand the operational detail. Um, however, I do know in the study, there were, uh, strategies recommended, both operational. Um, you know, getting down to talking about the, the CAD system, talking about turnout times and those type of things.
Okay.
Uh, along with building stations. Uh, there's also discussion about. How future stations will allow for more strategic positioning of engines and equipment. Uh, so it's, it's, it's a combination.
Okay. So in other words, these new forestations will alleviate some of the. Issue problems.
This study was the first step of a hundred steps.
Okay.
So, you know, the most important thing to, you got to know where you're going in order to get there and that's what we wanted. Um, because like the, the north area is already planned, right? Already laid out. And we haven't figured out where the stations are going to go up there. So when the small area plan for the south was coming in, we want to make sure we have those locations picked out. Almost to the parcel number if we can. Then we can take those parcels, figure out where the next two should go to get our best rating. And then that's where we figure out where the, the two in the northeast come from. Um, so again, step one of, of, of a hundred to get to where we want to be. So we're, we're a long way from looking at that, but this study did find some short-term things that we could do to fix that, um, response time and the, the chief, uh. Has started working on some of those.
Okay.
And I will say on behalf of the fire department, the eleven minutes is, is the max, not the minimum. And if you, if you leave the fire station in town and try to go to the north section, uh. Or Chatham Park, getting through this main street is a really big house. If you go south, it's, I'm sure the response time is way less.
So I'm assuming that our priority then would be the north station first, right? Number four on your map should be the first station to alleviate some of that tension.
Likely, yes. Okay, that's, yeah.
Okay.
And I do, and I think we heard this on, in the budget retreat, as the chief is, is being very strategic in utilizing. Mutual aid, uh, using the Chatham, North Chatham. Fire departments to, to supplement to offset some of the extreme travel times and, and traffic impacts, so, um. I know there are adjustments that they have already been making. So, okay, good.
All right. Thank you, Ken.
Yep.
Jonathan, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Oh, one thing, sorry. Uh, so we, we released our PO for the Thompson Street widening. Um, we don't have a timeline of when that is going to start, but we're going to work with that contractor to figure that out.
Um, we don't have a timeline of when that is gonna start, but we're gonna work with that contractor to figure that out. Cause we've also gotta work with Pike, cause they're doing the Duke work along Thompson Street as well. But we wanna make sure that you all know and the public knows, uh, we're gonna be sending out letters to the affected property owners. So we can give them plenty of time to notify them of that road expansion. Cause that's gonna be pretty impactful, not only to traffic, but the folks that live on that road. Um, so we're in the process of getting those letters put together and developing a project uh website. So folks can go on and kinda see the progress and understand the timeline and the work that's gonna be done. Just wanna let you on that.
And that's an eighteen inch expansion.
Yes, sir. And then we're gonna stripe it down the middle to keep people on their respective sides. Um, and then we'll see how that works, and if we have to, we'll throw some stop signs up along that way to slow people down even more.
Are there any updates about bright speed and the cable? Laying in uh Chatham Forest?
Yeah, I think it was last week or two weeks ago, Kent put a stop work order on them for the gas lines that they continued to hit. There's still some unresolved issues that they haven't fixed, and I think uh Kent has told them until those are fixed, uh, your stop order stays in place.
Okay.
Kent did allow them to do some above ground work uh in Chatham Park, cause they had a contract with them. Um, and other areas where they didn't seem to be making so many mistakes, um, but Kent, I'll let you add to that.
Yeah, that was right on target. I mean, there's a, uh, I know for one, there's a, a mailbox. And Chatham Forest that is still sitting on the ground beside the post. So, yeah, we said until those things are addressed, it's a, it's a nonstarter to talk about resuming, so, okay.
Thank you. All right, for uh mayor and commissioner updates, I will start on uh, as I said before, May thirteenth and fourteenth was the Main Street Conference in Goldsboro. And some good accolades for Pittsburgh there and some good learning for our, for our team. Um, I think we might have had the biggest turnout, uh, well, I know we had the most fun group there, so. That's worth. Um, March twenty third was the Ag Fest here at this building, and then we also had some downtown events uh partnered up with that. So like to see both those things working together. On March twenty fifth, I went and had lunch at the senior center and saw the uh expansion and some of the new programs and stuff they have going there, so really good work. March twenty seventh, we met with the builder for the skate park to continue progress on that project. Uh, and then also attended the town and state dinner in Southern Pines, Pinehurst, one of those two. Um, April fifth, just this Friday, was a ribbon cutting at Fry Studios, so that's right downtown. Across the street from Havoc, a new uh studio and art gallery in town. And also had a uh meet the neighbor event, meet your neighbor event at the plant. So I think that's the first of, of many that they're gonna do. Um, appreciate uh Commissioner Botts, Commissioner Vos attending that as well. And uh, yesterday was first Sunday with the expansion to the Papa Park and then also involving the plant. So a lot of, a lot of people in town, uh, from town and from out of town. And uh, that was a really, a good event uh yesterday that we had good weather for as well. Um, Central Pines Regional Planning Organization, next meeting is April eleventh. I attended the EDC meeting on March twenty seventh, and the next one is on the seventeenth. And that's all. Commissioner Ballen?
Thank you very much. I attended the Central Pines Regional Council meeting on March twenty seventh, twenty twenty four. The main, some of the main topics that was discussed was interest, was the pay and classification study update. Which that was commissioned by, of course, the Triangle J, which is this now, Central Pines. Uh, for them to look at the salaries within Triangle J, Central Pines Regional Council. They will present to the entire board in our April meeting. And that way we can dis- determine whether or not those will be put in place or, or not. And that study was conducted by the Piedmont Re Triad Regional Council. So they conducted the study on behalf of the Central Pines Regional Council. Additionally, as you all know, each year that there is a nomination for new officers. Because each officer only serves one year. And so that will be held with all of the previous chairs, including myself, that we are the ones that. Suppose those, of that nominating committee. So, and those individuals will be people that are already on the board. And we will go forward with that discussion and then we will contact those individuals accordingly. So that's all that I have for right now. Next meeting will be the fourth Wednesday in, uh, in April. And it is a public meeting, so you all can certainly attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Botts?
Yeah, I have no update.
Thank you. Commissioner Farrell?
Unfortunately, I'll have to apologize to the PBA. I missed their March meeting. I don't know if Teresa attended, but I. I'll try to do my best to make April.
Good, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Foley?
Uh, a couple of things. Uh, number one, I attended the Affordable, uh, Chatham County Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Uh, meeting this month. And uh, Melissa Lowell is the outreach uh coordinator for the county. And her job is to search out and help homeless in Chatham County. And so she gave a compelling description of the need for uh emergency housing. And uh, the, the actual numbers of people that do not have a place. And that was quite educational. Uh, on, on another front, uh. Last, last month, we talked about a housing report by the multiple listing service, and I just wanted to describe the, the, the housing report. For Chatham County this month or last month. Total number of listings in the county was four hundred and forty. That's down fifteen percent. So what does that mean? That's a year over year. Fifteen percent means that there are not as many people trying to sell their homes this, this time. From, from last year. The number of sales were down twenty nine percent for the county. We only had seventy eight sales in MLS this, this last month. Uh, the median sales price for the county is six hundred and fourteen thousand dollars now. And for the state is three hundred and twelve thousand dollars. And then the last thing I wanna talk about is, it would be the inventory for the county, this or four month inventory. So an inventory is the amount of homes uh for sale in the county. And a good number for, to be a healthy number is six, six months of inventory. So we're down to four point four percent, excuse me, four, four point four uh months. And that is all about building and, and moving. I don't think that right now, that at current economic uh reasons. Uh, there are single family home buyers and sellers don't want to, to sell. They don't wanna sell because the interest rates are so high. Instead of sticking at home, they're renovating their houses as opposed to selling and moving up. So that's the uh Chatham County MLS numbers for last month. And that's all I have.
Good, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Vos?
Since our last meeting, I have attended an Arts Council, ABC Board, as well as a Chamber of Commerce Board meeting. I've also had a lunch at the Pittsburgh Center for Active Living, and I attended the Welcome to the Neighborhood event at the plant that. Mayor Ship mentioned. I've got two save the dates. Um, on April fourteenth, the Arts Council is hosting Clyde Fest right here. That's rain or shine. And then on April twenty fifth, from eight thirty to ten thirty AM, the Chamber of Commerce is hosting a development briefing also here at the Ag Center.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Ship, I, I took a pass earlier, but I think I'd like to reconsider that if I may take a moment. Yep. Um, uh, as many folks know, I serve on the Chatham County Climate Advisory Committee. And uh, I have mentioned on two prior occasions that. Um, Duke Energy is before the Utilities Commission. With um, a, a carbon, a climate related proposal. And uh, there have been comments um. Circulating, and I think it's worth noting that the. Chatham County Climate Advisory Committee is evaluating uh. A formal written comment to this process at the Utilities Commission because of the inadequacy of Duke's proposal. Um, and their um. Lack of inclusion of a number of things that would make power cheaper for us and more resilient. Uh, that said, um, I don't think that there's. A position for the, the town board unless the board uh feels especially strong about. Uh, the possibility of making a comment or joining these comments, but. I do think that the county commissioners are likely to. Uh, receive an endorsement from the Climate Advisory Committee. And given the makeup of the county commission, I think that they're likely to sign on to those comments. So I just wanted to update y'all.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, up next is public comments. Uh, when you come up, please state your name and address at the start of your comments. There's a time limit of three minutes, which will be displayed on the screen. In the interest of time and fairness, it is the board's policy not to respond directly to comments during this period. Staff will follow up as appropriate. So first up, we have Laura.
Good evening, Mayor Ship and all of our esteemed commissioners and other official guests. My name is Laura Sandvik of one, two, seven Forest Lane. I'm honored to stand before you today to introduce a new Chatham County nonprofit. That is poised to make a positive impact on our community, especially our youth, and that is Circle City Theater Company. Samuel Walker Junior and I have founded this nonprofit because we've seen firsthand the power, the transformative power of the theater in the lives of young people. Which better, bigger than putting on a performance. It's about fostering creativity. Building confidence in community and providing a platform for self-expression. At the heart of our mission is a commitment of creating healthy spaces for um. Themselves and believe in themselves through high quality arts opportunities. And we believe that every young person, regardless of their background or their circumstances, should have the opportunity to participate in the arts. That's why our main stage shows are fee free for participants. Circle City Theater Company provides a safe and supportive environment where young people can explore their passions, develop new skills and find a purpose. Through um our workshop shops, classes and plays. We aim to cultivate the next generations of artists and storytellers and leaders. And research has shown that involvement in the arts provides benefits offstage as well. Um, improving academic performance, enhancing social skills and promoting emotional welding, things our youth deserve. In closing, I invite each of you to join us on this journey. Your support is invaluable, especially in our first year of operations. As we strive to make a meaningful difference in the lives of our youth. Please come out and attend our first middle and high school play, which is being held um at George Moses Horton Middle School. May second through the fourth, and its title is The Yellow Boat. Or come out and visit our booth on June fifteenth at the Juneteenth Celebration at our fairgrounds. Thank you all for your time, and we look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay, uh, no one else has signed up for public comment? Up next is a public hearing on a rezoning request, PB twenty three, five twenty seven. To uh, M one conditional for uh the Schrammick. Right?
Good evening. Uh.
Uh, just a second, I'm sorry. I'll take a, a motion to go into public hearing.
Yes, come on.
Uh, Commissioner Ballen, second, Commissioner Foley, all those in favor?
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, sharing the camera here with the prop. Anyway, uh. It's all right. Nature perfect. All right. So what we're here to discuss this evening, we have a legislative request. Mr. Schrammick here has uh submitted a petition for a map amendment rezoning um. Four, no, I'm sorry, it's five parcels, two, three, yeah, five. The current classification are a two to M one CZ, so this is a conditional zoning. Combined land is approximately eleven and eighteen acres. Located at twenty three thirteen and twenty four eleven US Highway sixty four uh Business West. Uh, the owner uh states that he intends to utilize the site. For a maximum of one hundred thousand square feet of enclosed storage space. And he intends to place forty, not a maximum, but forty, I'll make a few corrections here, permanent parking spaces for boats and RVs. Obviously, the site is due west to where we're sitting right now. Uh, Reeves Farm over here, and then you just keep going. Owner in his application states his intention is to preserve the rural and agricultural features. In design and design elements. There will be no onsite employees. Customers will access the site via a keypad. And the nighttime lighting is supposed to be designed to be aimed downward and intended to be unobtrusive. It's a matter of uh sort of a point of order. On January the sixteenth of twenty twenty four, Planning Board voted uh four to one to recommend denial. Uh, of this particular conditional rezoning. Uh, I did want to mention in terms of the strategic plan, this does offer um resources to help entrepreneurs and small businesses thrive. That is a stated goal. Included in your packet, among other things, there is a map on the second page of the presentation. Which uh actually shows you the location site and sort of how this has been uh. Being a um. The land use map that we have, everybody's future land use map, if you actually uh rezone something and it is uh not. In compliance with the map, it becomes a uh place where a new category is placed there. Okay, here we go. All right, a little bit more. There you go. There's our map. Well, about to get there. There's the map. And uh, this basically shows you the approximate location of the site on um. On the, yeah, this is, this is it right here. So you're just past Reeves Farm uh itself. Included in the packet today is um an ordinance to uh amend the official zoning map. There's also a list of conditions which began a page or two down from here. And I did wanna mention that there is a one error in that list of conditions. Number two, uh, it should read that. The uh parking spaces, not, it's not, not less than, it's just plain old forty parking spaces shall be provided for boats and recreational vehicles. Um, rest of the conditions are here and um. And in just a second, I'm gonna turn the floor over to the petitioner. If you all have any questions before I do that. Happy to take those questions, but I can also come back. So. And have the petitioner introduce himself and. Yep. Send me a slide here.
Good evening, uh, Mayor Ship, members of the town board and valued town staff. My name is Nicholas Schrammick, a dedicated property owner and aspiring small business owner in Pittsburgh. My investments in town and in the ETJ signify my commitment to our shared future. I stand before you with a proposal for a sustainable storage facility, thoughtfully designed to meet the demands of our growing town. This facility would be located on a lot that is already partially zoned for commercial activity. And it will reflect our town's deep seated commitment to environmental stewardship. As Pitt, Pittsburgh continues to flourish, the necessity for such services is clear. A storage solution of this nature is not simply for convenience, it is a vital infrastructure supporting our community as we expand. I hold in high regard the town's encouragement of small business ventures and green initiatives, and this facility is my contribution to both of those values. Inside your packets, you'll find a comprehensive project details. Thank you for your time, and I respectfully ask for your consideration of my rezoning request. Look forward to the possibility of contributing to Pittsburgh's promising and sustainable future. Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
Yes, Mr. Schrammick.
Yep.
I, I wanna thank you for the conditions that, that you have a, agreed to already. Um, and uh, especially appreciate your consideration or concern for aesthetics. And um. Uh, environmental impact.
Yes, that's.
And the uh, the pledge of uh solar installation on the rooftop is, is noted. But I, I'd like to ask you if you would, um, in your own words, you, you've put it here in writing, but I'd like you to, to share with the public. Uh, a little bit more about that, please.
Yeah, um.
Collaborate.
Sure, uh, my objective with. Sure. Uh my objective with this property was if someone were to come from out of town and drive by it, they would think it's a, it looks like a farm with solar panels on it. Um I have a a deep rooted commitment to sustainability, uh environmental um protectionism to to a degree, um looking for sustainable energy resources. So, for example, uh one acre of solar panels on there creates one million kilowatt hours of energy. With that perspective, one family uses about nine to twelve thousand kilowatt hours per year. So after the facility needs are taken care of, you're looking at powering fifty to eighty homes potentially with with renewable resources. And that's just something I'm very passionate about.
And uh elsewhere in the conditions, um you've agreed to um adhere to the UDO, the Unified Development Ordinance, as it pertains to night sky and and protection of the night sky and
Yes.
and lighting. Um it's been a frequent uh topic of conversation at this board. Um and staff have responded uh that I think that in our parking lot of of items waiting to be um revised or improved in the UDO is that section for additional protection of the dark night sky. And I'll I'll go ahead and take the moment to to say that uh when I witnessed the additional elements review committee, their deliberation of of the various aspects of the Chatham Park Master Plan, which is the biggest project that's been considered in this community. The issue, the issue that had the broadest political buy-in, the most conservative member of that review committee and the most, I would say, progressive or liberal members, all agreed the protection of the night sky was crucial.
Like pollution, yeah.
Yeah, like pollution. And so I wonder if you would be willing to go beyond that or make a pledge that uh as our UDO section six point six is revised, that you will, uh I don't know if this is even possible, but set aside the developer choice rule and adhere to whatever the town adopts.
Yes, I I will adhere to that. Um I wish my civil engineer was here tonight. He's actually coaching uh his daughter's soccer team. Um but in discussions with him, downlining was very important and uh creating an an unobtrusive uh situation on that property is is my biggest concern. I treat any project that I do as if I was the neighbor of one of those projects. So yes, light pollution to me is very important.
I appreciate that. I'm gonna draw further on some a recent experience. I would um took spring break with my kids and family out west and in Arizona. Sedona in particular uh is one of the earliest doctors, if maybe the the first adopter of the dark sky protection policy. And it was remarkable, uh we went to a grocery store and there were zero of the, you know, twenty or thirty foot tall um streetlight parking lot illumination devices. Everything in there was either uh four foot tall or six or eight foot tall with uh complete cutoff of the lighting fixture so that only light was below the the fixture itself. There was zero light uh leaving the parking lot.
Okay.
And it was a really interesting experience for me, first time I've ever been in a parking lot at night, which was illuminated in the way that I would say, you know, uh the SAS campus is illuminated or uh a a pleasant backyard of a private facility that that it it didn't feel like your typical experience. And so it was a little bit I won't say unsettling, but I I definitely took note. This is a lot less illumination than I'm accustomed to. What that then raises for me is a set of concerns because I think we in the southeast are so accustomed to having really brightly lit outdoor spaces at night. I know that there is a concern by the neighbors for security.
Yep.
And so I'm wondering if you would go a step further uh with regard to your provision of security systems. I'm confident, I don't even know you, we've not spoken, but I'm confident you're going to do something with with cameras. And so uh I I'll just, I'll leave it to you to elaborate on that and then we'll figure out what we can do with it.
Yeah, I I'm definitely looking into uh out of the box solutions for that, uh whether it be night vision or something along that lines that can lower the light level and not be obtrusive. So I I'm I'm all for anything on the table, working with the town to make something make sense.
Yeah.
Um related to the the conservation effort, some of this area includes a natural resource conservation target area. You intending to have structures in that natural resource? So the the area that you're talking about, the little lines across it, that's um that's gonna be a retention pond and then there's a floodplain behind that. So none of that area is is looking to be used as an actual facility or anything on that. Okay. Um and then the the staff memo said that hours of operation would be uh limited to daylight hours. That should be normal operating hours and that can be decided that working with the town, whether it's seven AM to seven PM or eight eight AM to eight PM or eight AM to five PM, whatever that is, we can, I'm I'm open to suggestions. I I didn't when I put that together, I put that in there. Uh I didn't think about daylight savings time. Hopefully we we do. I'll make that at some point, but um yeah, so that wasn't considered at the time. Wh- what would your preferred hours be? I know that was some of the community concerns is twenty-four hour access. No, there will, there will be no twenty-four hour. Uh the the only concern that I do have is mitigating a circumstance, say someone's moving from Michigan or something like that, gets stuck in traffic, they have to come late, they want to drop off their stuff. So there might be warm-off situations where I'll physically go down there and open the facility for them. But beyond that, no, it's not gonna be a twenty-four hour facility. Okay.
You can say uh keyca- or keypad access available, normal business hours of other circumstances require of premise employees or something. We can do way better than that, but yeah.
Just for the sake of clarity, it very much needs to be in the
Yes.
condition. I I don't want to leave this meeting and hope for a set time. I think we need to set it while we're here. For the sake of clarity, the site is currently uniformly zoned, uh rural agricultural. There's no, it may be in commercial use, but it is a non-conforming commercial use. Going on to you.
Kahoon Tendo, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
See here that the planning board voted four to one to recommend denial.
Yes, ma'am.
Can you indicate the reasons why they denied the request, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Simply it was based on, I I was not at that meeting, but um but a staffer member, staff member handled it for me. I will certainly say that the and it was a public meeting, but I was gonna say it had to do with the fact that it did not match the land use plan. It, the plan um yeah, on the screen a minute or so ago, um it's uniformly residential and conservation. That's what that yellow and green is all about.
Thank you.
Are we trained?
Uh against, depends on who asks a question.
We do have two, two members of the public sign up to speak as well.
About safe.
Yeah, we'll we'll go to those and we'll come back to commissioner comments. Steve will be up first.
Good evening, mayor and members of the board. Uh my name is Steve Markham. My wife and I and our four young children live directly across the street from the property in this proposal. Uh we own the old Flint house that's on the north side of the Business sixty-four. And if you've driven by recently, you'll notice we spent a lot of time cleaning up the pastures, fixing the barn and bringing back the charm of this one hundred year old uh farm. We have two entrances off of the Business sixty-four. One goes to our driveway, the other goes to our barn. Uh the rezoning and subsequent construction of the storage unit will inevitably bring a series of new customers, acquaintances of customers and others to our street, many of whom no doubt will realize that there is no area to turn around on the Business sixty-four. Perhaps they'll realize that they can't turn left into the storage unit. Uh they probably will see a wide and inviting turn onto our family's property where we keep our horses and where our young children play. And I worry that the rezoning and construction of the facility will bring a never-ending series of unwanted visitors onto our property, disrupting the routines of our children and animals. Um uh there may be some submitted comments uh as well from other neighbors, and if so, I I just add my voice to those concerns that have been expressed on visual appeal, lighting and security. Uh and I think these concerns, no doubt, uh will come up with the construction of any storage unit. But what's different about this construction is that it's being done in an established and currently protected residential community. Indeed, the future land use plan is designed to preserve and protect the community. And the key component of Pittsburgh's charm is its rural community and its blend with its new and important suburban communities. And one of the key tenants of the plan is to preserve that makeup and ensure that new development is done in the interest of the town's permanent residents and not in the economic interests of a non-resident. And I've talked to every neighbor uh that is adjacent to the property, none of whom have ever spoken ecstatically or endorsed the construction or the amendment to the plan. If an amendment to the plan was in the interest of the city of the residents, an amendment may make sense, and I do believe that storage units have their value. But not directly inside an area zoned for residential use and particularly when there are ample options of self-storage readily available in every direction. The next closest storage unit is a three-minute drive west on the Business sixty-four. And of note, that location rightfully so lies outside of the ETJ. The future land use plan is designed to protect. For these reasons, I hope this committee denies the rezoning and permanent amendment to the future land use plan and instead votes to protect the charm and community of our town. Thank you.
Thank you. And up next, I apologize, I can't read this writing.
Hi. Uh so I'm Davis Lindsey Weisbecker. I live at ninety-nine Reeves Road. That's uh the neighborhood just between the Reeves Farm Development and this uh mini storage. Um I also don't support the proposed rezoning or the change to the land use plan. Um that acreage, as we already talked about, is part of the Robson Creek Ed Waters target priority area. Um even if the buildings in the parking lot are not in the in the described natural resource area, there's a lot of storm water coming off there um that I don't think should be ignored. That's part of our our watershed for um Jordan Lake. Um a quick look at Google Maps, as is noted, um shows the nearest storage facilities less than five miles away. Um there's also several, it looks like the development is largely coming to the eastern side of town, so doesn't it make sense to have storage facilities over there a bit more? I also believe, I may may not understand this, but I think that the Reeves Farm rezoning includes mini storage as part of one of the allowed uses for some of the areas. So I don't see an urgent need here. Um there's a proposed greenway and public park at the future Reeves Farm Development. That's less than a mile from here. So I just think that if we're gonna develop this property, a better use is for the use of people rather than stuff. Um I also just want to say more generally that um when we talk about the UDO change parking lot, the um natural resources priority areas in the land use plan really aren't reflected in UDO at all. So all these developments coming to the southwestern part of um the ETJ really are going to be held against us. It's just a symbolic thing on a map. So um I just hope that that can happen. Um and I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Th- those are the two that were signed up tonight. I will say that uh John Mitradamo, Mitradamo and adjacent property owners submitted comments uh by email in opposition to this, but was not able to be here tonight. Is there anyone else that is here that wanted to speak, wasn't able to sign up? Please say your uh name and address.
Uh Kenneth Henderson.
When you get up here, this again.
And and Deborah Henderson, two-two-nine-four US sixty-four Business West. Totally against what's gonna happen here. Lived at this property for twenty years. Um saw it when the Flint Hill Farm was here. No problems, but I'd like to ask all you folks here, how would you like to walk out your front door and look at a storage unit? Not very nice. That's all I need to say. Thank you.
If you can sign in with with Carrie here, she gets the sheet. Okay, uh anyone else who'd like to speak? Okay, thank you. Uh Commissioner comments?
Um I'll just mention um one thing, I'm either uh planning board and our planning staff that uh that this this does not match the land use plan. Um we're, it's a RA two residential agricultural area and uh I'm not in support of this uh rezoning.
I did hear all of the information you presented and actually I concur with the planning board and I'm not in favor of that
Okay.
because of the location, basically.
Yeah.
If it was another place, it may be different, but I do not approve of that location. So I'm not in favor of this plan, unfortunately.
And am I, am I allowed to make any comments or? Uh let's, okay, better the commissioner speak.
You have something?
You don't have to either.
I don't know that I have a whole lot to add other than I've heard about this in a lot of detail. I know the history of how I got here. It's primarily because of the history of how we got here that I am supporting.
So it it there, tell me about the market.
Yeah, so
an argument.
Should be a study that was either part of the packet or a separate separately with um the other storage facility that's down the road that's been mentioned. We're at capacity in all storage. Um even that one's at ninety-five or ninety-six percent capacity. Um as we continue to grow, we're going to need storage. The other thing too is this is located on a road that's fifty-five miles per hour, which is a main artery thoroughfare from Pittsburgh to Siler City. And once the expressway goes in as well, that's gonna create more traffic. Um storage on its face, uh they've done studies, it produces seven cars per hundred units that you have at a storage facility. So if you were to have five hundred units, that's thirty-five cars per day, by that over, let's say, a twelve-hour window, that's three cars per hour. That is not adding a lot of traffic to that road. Um so those are some things in in defense of this.
I appreciate the steps that you've taken to make it look less like a storage facility to make it better for the the land that it sits on.
Yeah, it'll have a natural barn aesthetic look.
I'll just, I'll just make one comment, maybe to Randy. Um how is this gonna affect our land use plan?
Well, I'm sorry, that's that's, yes.
I mean, that that we just established recently.
One year ago, yes, sir. Um well, basically, the way the law works since twenty twenty-one is that um when you take your land use plan and you actually act against the land use plan, it doesn't affect the words, but it does change the map in that area. So you would have essentially a donut hole in the shape of this particular item. Um it does beg the question of, you know, is your next step going to change it? This this particular process does not change the whole map, but it is going to create a hole in it. And that's, boy, if it's approved.
Was the uh Reeves Family Farm Development uh compliant with the land use plan?
Actually, yes. Um when you go to the uh to the map, it was actually created, it was uh created as an activity center and it was actually specifically identified in that map.
Okay.
If you go to the illustration, it's the second. Do you mind, do you mind? I'm sorry. I can pull up those maps one more time. Uh it's 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 a hundred percent on there. Yeah, really. Okay, there we go. Over here, that big, mm-hmm, see the big red sort of dot? That's there.
Proud of this.
Yes.
And what about the timing of of your application, Mr. Schrammick? Was that, how was, how was that?
Yeah, so this is
Did you apply before this land use plan was approved or not?
Yes, yeah, so this has been a four-year process. Um I've been talking with planning staff the entire time. The original staff that was in there, I was getting the sense that they really liked the idea. They loved the aesthetics of it. They'd like the location of it. Um unfortunately, the planning staff has turned over a lot during that period of time. And then the new staff that came in told me to wait for the new land use plan to come out. So I waited, waited, waited. They knew that this was kind of supposed to be going into the the hopper there. And the land use plan came out and I was completely omitted from that. And so it's been, it's been a pretty expensive, rigorous process to get to this point today.
Do you want to point out that the land use plan was adopted approximately six days after my arrival? I was not, I was not part of the news though.
I'm very hopeful that we have a lot of staff stay and everything's good with us.
That detail was worth bringing up. The new staff he was referring to are no longer with us.
Yes.
And since you've been here, have there been other storage facilities approved?
No, oddly enough, no. The only storage facility that was, I guess you could call it approved, is the last detail on the one on the eastern side of the business.
Highway 64.
Yes, that was in 2022. And the last condition of that was annexation in. So that was in existence approximately a year before the adoption of the land use plan. There was a failed attempt by Northwood. That was during my time here. And I was very much a participant in that. Not the vetting of it, but the public hearing and what led, what happened. Okay. All right, we just lost the screen.
Again.
Okay.
Yeah, there we go.
All right.
A question actually on annexation, the condition 12 says it. But it doesn't have a timeframe associated with that.
And I thank you for pointing out that. That is a deficiency in this group and we definitely need to have one that mirrored the last group. It was annexation, I'm sorry, the annexation that we most recently tied to the conditions had to do with, I believe, Turkey Creek. And in their case, it was availability of water and sewer. In this particular case, I'm going to say that I would be more inclined to recommend that it be much more like the one over on 64 East, in which case they got construction drawing approval. But before they could begin construction, the final step in construction drawing approval was voluntary annexation took place then.
Okay.
And that, that was how that one worked.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, that's what this should say clearly.
And Mr. Kahoon Tingle, what, what language would you recommend that we use to sort out this matter of? Section, you know, sufficient to say something additional like must comply with section 6.6 of UDO even after revision?
How about?
Um, that's, I'm sorry, that's, I'm looking at the town attorney and waiting to see what he has to say. But let me say ordinarily, you could do that. That would assume that we were going to amend it in a particular way. You might wish to just flesh out the changes that you'd like to make. Certainly, the gentleman who sent in the email regarding his concern about security lights did point out that he was much more supportive of the 16-foot light situation rather than the 37-foot that is required in the UDO. So the very least, you could certainly set the height of it. I'm going to also say that in terms of security, there's a, there's sort of a common sense aspect. You're going to need to set some sort of a range for hours. Because again, if you're really up in 24 hours a day and you are this individual who's coming in from out of.
Michigan.
From Michigan. Thank you so much. Yes, it's coming clear to me like the water. But, but clearly Michigan. But let me say that you would want to set some sort of hours and it's not unusual to set a non-daylight hours, daylight savings time hours versus the others. But yes, that would be pretty normal.
We got this. Property shall meet all night sky standards as required in the UDO at the time of site plan approval.
Oh, yeah.
And then for business hours, the site shall adhere to normal operating hours limited to the hours of 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. The exception to this condition may occur when there's a hardship in reaching the site where the staff attendant will access the property. Additionally, the site shall have keypad access only during approved operating hours. I'm going to suggest 8:00 to 6:00 PM. So you have a little wiggle room for people going to work or coming home from work.
Mr. Schrammick, when, when do you expect you might be back with site plans?
We're probably looking a couple of months out.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm just going to guess that our UDO parking lot is not advancing that rapidly. But maybe I shouldn't say that.
So that would be two months from now.
And it's dark sky.
I would, you asked me, Mr. Barnes, if you want something specific for this property, you should include it in the condition.
And, and, and I don't want to go into those weeds because I think there's much complexity there. 17-foot, I think that's too high, but. Because I, I think, I think we've got a willing applicant here who agrees with the principles and may even be willing to help us advance us. So that's why I'm a little reluctant to.
Having said that, let me say this. At the same time, if you really have a burning desire to have them less than 37 feet, you really need to spell it out in these conditions. As someone could come back prior to the construction drawing approval and say, yeah, I know we said that night, it was great. Here's the problem. Your ordinance says 37 feet is the maximum height. If you want them to be no more than 10 feet, no more than 12 feet, no more than eight feet, it would be a lot safer and a lot clearer to stay the actual desired height. You're doing a conditional rezoning as such. If this is approved, the conditions need to spell out the expectations of the board so that when this is under construction, my phone is not blowing up with why are these things so dang high?
Yeah, I, I very much want to support staff's work management detail on this point. Yeah, it's also been here since I reviewed the dark skies policies in detail. So it's not fresh in my mind.
The, the other issue in terms of security also pointed out by our emailing friend is that the type E buffer that is everywhere except for the front F is required because it's a limited access highway out here. That is just a fact. So when you take that out of the equation and you go to the E, which is around the edges, there are actually two kinds of E buffer. One requires a fence and the other one does not. If you want a fence for security purposes, you need to make it clear there needs to be a six-foot fence because that takes the coin toss aspect out of what happens at construction drawing.
There will, there will be a fence around the, as part of the, I thought to have the feet on each side, you have to have, you have to put up a six-foot fence at least.
I'm simply saying that detail needs to be hammered out tonight.
Yep.
My concern is a lack of clarity when it comes time to fill out the forms that he is going to have to sign.
Any additional comments before we close the public hearing?
Do we need to hammer out a light process now?
I think, I think we can close the public hearing and then go to a motion and discussion.
Mr. Schrammick, do you have anything else to add before we close?
I don't believe so. Take a motion to close the public hearing?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. Your bonds, both in favor?
Aye.
So we could change that language to where he would be, he would have to comply to the standards in 6.6 as they change every time. Now, that's kind of a heavy lift for him because they could change.
Yeah.
Five times between now and the life cycle of this.
I think we'd have to limit it to site plan submission or something like that.
Not site plan submission before final construction drawing approval.
Yeah, so I mean, at some point in time, it's got to be a standard, but.
I mean, our intention is to get it done by June. And yet, his site plan may precede that. So that's the sequence that I'm trying to figure out.
Site plan and construction drawings are two different steps, but.
Yes.
Yes. And I've also got to add, rooftop solar.
It's not, it's not.
Okay, I don't believe so. Rooftop solar?
No, it's not on here. It was offering it as an option, but if you want to make it a condition, it needs to be included. And that would actually go in with a group of, more opposed, 14. It goes on 14.
Team E rooftop solar.
Yep.
And fence would be under what?
I think that's already in here.
You add that to the buffer piece, which is actually the detail, which is landscaping number 10.
Change opaque screen to fence.
I'm sorry.
Change opaque screen to fence.
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
Make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to deny the conditional rezoning. This does not match the land use plan.
Second.
Second, a motion by Commissioner Farrell, second by Commissioner Baldwin. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I'll discuss our offer discussion. I am not a huge fan of off-site storage. I am appreciating however, that there is already a storage unit, almost mirror image on the opposite side of town on East Street we approved. Granted, that was before our future land use plan, but this project was submitted before our future land use plan was revised. I am impressed with the extent to which this applicant has demonstrated their willingness to attend to the unique concerns of this community. And I don't own a boat, but I reckon that people who are living, moving into Reeves Farms might own a boat and they're not going to be able to store it in their neighborhood because we're asking for such tight density and narrow lot lines and no parking areas, little parking areas. I think that the storage is needed. Again, there, there's much better ways to stimulate our economy. But I am sympathetic to the applicant's, the history of the, the process. And I am open to approval of this project with additional concessions and conditions that we might come up with here. So I'll respectfully vote against your motion, Commissioner Farrell.
I, I think it's important to, with our future land use plan, that we start looking 15, 20 years out as we do that. And this, this site is going to be very much in town at that time. You know, Reeves Farm will obviously extend fairly dense development out that way. And I think that where we have utilities, now that we have utilities on the way and utilities processed that, you know, it's important to use sites that will have utilities for the most appropriate use at that time. So not only respecting the rights of people who are currently property owners, there's also two houses right now being built adjacent to this property that likely don't know about this proposal. But, but that we also, you know, now that we have an updated future land use plan, that we use that and think about what, what this is going to look like 15, 20 years from now. Any other discussion on the?
Well, again, I'm still not in favor of it whatsoever. I don't like the idea of that being that close within the city limits. I would prefer that be residential or something similar to that. It was a farm. It can go back to being a farm. That, I would love that. But I'm not, definitely not in favor of that. And in addition to storage, whether someone has a RV or a boat, then there are other storage facilities. Also, this indicates that there are 40 permanent parking spaces for boats and recreation vehicles. So all of that will be outside. So I'm still not in favor of it. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for a roll call vote, Commissioner Farrell.
Nay.
Commissioner Foley?
Aye.
Commissioner.
Wait, 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 you want to be, you want to be.
Motion is on Farrell's.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Hey, I'm against the rezoning.
And you're voting for your motion?
Okay, so we're acting on Mr. Farrell's motion.
A motion to deny.
Oh, okay.
Hey.
Commissioner Foley?
I move to approve it.
So you vote on the motion to deny?
I, I, help me out.
A nay.
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 Commissioner votes?
Nay. Thank you.
Commissioner Baldwin? And Commissioner Barnes?
Nay.
Okay, motion fails.
Can I just say one thing before we go any discussion? We have mentioned the, Commissioner Barnes, the, the, shoot, I'm sorry, I lost my mind. But the storage on, on East Street, on 64 East, it's back in the woods. This is right on 64. This is right on 64, coming into town. Can't compare 64 East and West when this, the east property is back in the woods, off the road. But with that said, I'll leave it at that.
Randy, what, what would the setback be from 64?
The front, the front, the buffer itself?
Well, I see located no closer to 30 feet from any perimeter boundary.
It's on the outside, but the front particular piece is a type F landscape buffer. So the type F, which is in 5.3.3, yeah, is, is clustered at 60 feet.
60 feet, yes.
The assumption is that that would have to be re-vegetated because as you know, when you go to the side, it's largely cleared.
Okay, so they would need a plant to.
That would be correct, yes.
Okay.
And one other key fact that I've just shown that if you add the fence, then the buffer reduces to 50 feet. Whereas prior to, before we had an 80-foot buffer, Bill said on this. An 80-foot buffer certainly provides a lot denser of a screening than a foot buffer. So just adding that fence in there, you, you could make it more visible from the street if visibility is a key concern.
Although the existing building is already visible from the street, so I'm not sure that we'll.
They're going to, they're going to have to plant all that stuff in there to create that. That buffer will have to be.
That's how you achieve the buffer is by planting a, essentially it's an F on the front, which is required on a limited controlled access highway. This is on page 130. So basically, if you go with option two, it's still 60 feet. And then the, the E, which is on the perimeter of it, you can reduce it to as low as 40 feet by putting up the fence.
So what are the two types of, of E then? An 80-foot buffer, a 40-foot buffer with a.
Yes, the 40 is when you put in the fence, which would be a thoroughly opaque fence.
But, but we could say maintain an 80-foot buffer, add the fence for security.
Yes. Yes, well, you're certainly going to need a fence for security no matter what you do. Or I won't store anything there.
So another thing that I have been consistent about, and I think I want, feel the need to be consistent about here again, is my extreme dislike for what I call on-the-fly editing and the kind of policymaking that's done hashed out in sessions like this. It really, really offends me. And so despite my concern for the applicant and probably his desire for resolution tonight, I think what I would greatly prefer is that we list those items of concern, see that we, we attend to those lists, delegate those to staff to, to go back. um, see that we we attend to those lists, delegate those to staff to to go back and and have those written as conditions because they don't appear in the conditions right now and, um, have it come back for.
That's fair.
A vote. Um, so then I'm willing to hash out, um, the list of concerns, but I don't want to do editing on the fly here, friends. So, um, I've I've heard, uh, folks express, uh, hope for annexation before construction drawings. Um, compliance with dark skies protection ordinances before the final final site plan approval. Uh, changing the opaque screen to a fence in the buffer and maintaining an eighty-foot buffer on the front with the fence added for security.
I think that's an eighty-foot on the side, correct?
Oh, eighty-foot on the side, thank you.
Front and sides.
Right sided.
And front is front is what, front and side.
Front is six, yeah, front is sixty at a minimum.
Is that with the fence?
Um, yes, it's a solid fence or wall at least six feet high. If you don't put in a solid fence or a wall that's at least six feet high, then you're at a hundred feet. Essentially, the idea is I shouldn't be able to see through it. But but taking Mr. Bonnet's point, yes, I feel the tabling this and coming back with more complaints out of.
Um, rooftop solar as a, an item in the conditions. Um, and, uh, I'll just leave it to applicant and staff to figure out whatever language is appropriate for, uh, up-to-date camera technology that that maximizes the use of low-light conditions for security.
And I think the other was that those structures will be located in the designated natural resource conservation target area.
So that's the, uh, that would be the south side of the property? Left-hand side of the drawing?
Correct.
So what I see is two retention ponds. You're saying to the south of the retention ponds?
Um, I I'm saying in the the natural resource conservation target area in the future land use.
Okay.
Uh, because I don't think that that site plan is not, that's just in the handout that he gave us. If if we come back with conditions, we already closed the public hearing, do we need to?
Um.
Okay. Got a negative, okay.
You would just table the item and then bring it back, but you would name the date and time at which you would bring it back for consideration.
Date of the next meeting.
May thirteen.
May thirteen.
That's it.
May thirteen. Uh, Mr. Tingle?
Yes.
That's feasible, May thirteen?
Going to have to be, isn't it?
No, sir, I I'm asking you.
Yeah, I think I think that that's perfectly feasible, yes, sir.
Okay.
I could, I can certainly type it up in that timeframe. The only thing I had was what else is on the agenda for the May thirteenth?
Sure. Okay. Um, so I move that we table this item for staff to work out additional conditions for approval before the May thirteenth meeting. And those, uh, additional items will include, uh, the site must have annexation before construction stage. It, uh, construction plans must comply with dark skies protection ordinances before the final site panel approval. Uh, we will change the opaque screen to a fence in the buffer. That's an eighty-foot buffer on the side, sixty-foot buffer on the front and add fence for security. Add the condition of rooftop solar. Uh, there will be no structures located in natural resource area and, um, up-to-date technology on security cameras to, or technology to take advantage of the low-light conditions.
Do you have the hours of operation in there as well?
Thank you. Hours of operation.
Seven A M. to six P M.
Seven A M. to six P M. Thank you, friends. Motion made.
Seconded.
Okay, second by Commissioner Voss, any discussion? All, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Good, we are to our action items now. First one is an appointment to the Pittsburgh Downtown Advisory Board. And.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. There is currently one vacant seat on the Downtown Advisory Board. We received eighteen applications for the seat. Uh, seven of the eighteen were eligible as the seat must be a business or property owner in the Downtown Main Street District. The seven eligible applicants were forwarded to the Downtown Advisory Board on March fifth. And the board recommended to a, to approve or recommended approval to appoint Zed Henry, um, to the board with a vote of ten to zero. And Zed is here tonight. Um, he's the owner of Finders and Seekers Downtown. Uh, he has extensive knowledge and promotions and organization of businesses. And, um, per his application, he hopes to increase collaboration and also maintain, help maintain the small-town integrity of downtown Pittsburgh. Zed is on our promotions committee and he's been involved in several projects. Um, just listed a few, he has helped us with the downtown website, which is launching this month. Uh, we wouldn't have been able to get it done as quickly as we have been with without his help. Um, he also helps with creating a lot of social media content, Facebook and Instagram pages. Um, he also volunteers at almost every event that we have. So whenever we need anything, uh, he's always there to help. Working with him at the advisory board level if he's appointed tonight. This agreement does expire on June thirtieth. So there will be three seats available at that time. Uh, so the intention would be for Mr. Henry to be reappointed to one of these three seats for a full term. So staff recommends a motion to appoint Stephen Zed Henry to fulfill the remaining term of the current seat, which expires on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
Any questions? I'll take a motion to appoint Stephen Zed Henry to fulfill the remaining term of the current seat, which expires on June thirty, twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Foley? Second. Commissioner Baldwin? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, welcome.
Great addition.
Uh, action item number two is move from consent agenda, the agreement, uh, the Highway eighty-seven sidewalk agreement.
Thank you, Mayor Ship. Uh, the only reason that I moved this discussion is such a welcome item on the agenda. I am just so thrilled to see this. And, uh, I also feel like it's maybe we're hiding our our light under a bushel basket by not emphasizing this project. Um, the first I heard of the need for sidewalks is when I was knocking on doors in those neighborhoods more than eight years ago for my first term in office. Um, the sidewalks, the improvements along Highway eighty-seven are just going to be wonderful. And I am just so, so pleased that, uh, staff have have been diligently working on this and, um, that I that I didn't even have to bang this drum. I mean, that's fantastic. So the fact that we won the N C D O T Carbon Reduction Program grant for pedestrian facilities is worthy of elevation. This is really worth bragging about, family and friends and and, um, uh, constituents from Honeysuckle Drive to Salisbury Street, even folks on Churchwood Lane had asked for this. And, um, I know we're not going to get down that far, but with with this project, we will get to the park and Town Lake Park and folks will be able to connect from, uh, the wonderful walkway at the Community College and Library all the way down to our Town Lake Park, and that's just a really, really great thing. So just wanted to make sure that we are, uh, giving it proper, uh, elevation and attention. And thank you again, staff, for for, uh, carrying the torch. So I move for approval.
Good, thank you, is there a second?
Seconded.
Commissioner Voss, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, then action item number three is the budget amendment for this same project. So let's take a motion to approve.
So moved.
Commissioner Bonnet's second?
Seconded.
Commissioner Voss, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes, thank you. Uh, we do not have a closed session this evening, so I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, Commissioner Voss, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.